Call the meeting to order. Have the pledge of allegiance, please. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next article under consideration is Article 11. On the motion, Selectman Vignani. And as Tony approaches, Chairman O'Toole asked me to express his regret for not attending. He had an important family matter to attend to that took him out of state. So, go ahead, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And I want to thank all of you for coming out for a consecutive night, if you happened to make it to two, and if you just made it to one, thank you for coming tonight. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to hear and act on a recommendation from the Community Preservation Committee, parentheses, the CPC, on the fiscal year 2018 community preservation budget and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44b, the Act, to appropriate and to reserve the sums of money as indicated below. I, to meet the administrative expenses and all of the necessary and proper expenses for the CPC for fiscal year 2018, two, for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, three, for the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, four, for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historical resources, and five, for the creation, acquisition, preservation... Am I reading the full wrong thing? Up. Thank you, Sean.
Slight revision.
Feel free to stop me when I am on the wrong road. I'll say the short version. I move that the town hear and act on the recommendation from the CPC Committee on the fiscal year 2018 community preservation budget and pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 44b, appropriate the community preservation funds as follows.
And then, as their second, seconded, Selectman Harris. If you turn to your books on page 28, you will find a list. Selectman Vignani. Oh. No, you know, the motions are in the, the amounts and sources are in the book, I believe.
So, just a summary of it?
Yeah.
Okay. The Board of Selectmen reviewed each one of these projects. There are 16 before you today, which hit all of the categories that I inadvertently read initially. The CPC Committee went over them thoroughly. Tricia sat through them four times. The advisory board sat through them. We'll hear about them all individually, but the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in support of all these motions.
Thank you, Tony. From the advisory committee, Mr. West. Oh, Mr. Heinemeier, pardon me.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, as Selectman Vignani mentioned, the advisory committee reviewed all of these projects. We did approve, we do approve of all of the projects unanimously, with the exception of item 10, the dog park, $48,700 for the creation of a dog park on the Driftway. That vote was six to two. The Community Preservation Act surcharge is 3% of, is a 3% increase on folks, what folks' real estate taxes would otherwise be, and it funds a Community Preservation Act. And I'm sure you'll hear from the Community Preservation Committee a lot more about each of these projects. The remaining balances after these projects, if they are all approved at town meeting, is in your advisory committee booklet. Thank you.
From the Community Preservation Committee, Ms. Karen Conley.
Good evening, everyone, my fellow citizens. Thank you for coming tonight. I have to admit, last night at 11 o'clock, I was going through my notes saying, "Cut that, cut that, cut that." I don't feel a need to rush tonight. I know that all of you that are here are interested in these projects, so all the applicants were here last night. I believe most of them are here tonight, and they are here to answer your questions if you have any. But just briefly, I will go over a couple of things. One of which is, we considered 11 projects, or are recommending 11 projects, for a cost of about $2.4 million. If all the applications and the transfers in Article 11, which is the reconciliation article, and Article 12 are approved, the fund balances as of July 1st will be, and they differ from what is in the book, because this assumes that all the projects get approved, and that we approve the rescissions, and we approve the reserves. So, for community housing, if everything's approved, the fund balance as of July 1st will be $197,000. The historical balance will be $678,000. The open space will be $763,000. The undesignated fund will be $3 million, and the administrative fund will have $91,000 in it. Here is a brief rundown of the recommended projects. Applications have been available for review on the town website on the Community Preservation page since October, and, as I mentioned, applicants are here tonight to answer any questions you might have. The first project is Lawson Green. It's an affordable 30-unit rental property for people 62 and over, with preference given to Situate residents. It will be located on land owned by the Situate Housing Authority behind Central Park Housing. The total project cost is estimated at $8.5 million. The CPC is recommending the town meeting approve 1.9 million in CPC funds to come from the community housing reserve and the undesignated funds. The Situate Affordable Housing Trust has approved an additional $600,000, bringing the total cost to the town of $2.5 million. The balance of the project will be financed through low-income tax credit financing, mortgage debt, state affordable housing grants, and developer equity. The developer will own and manage the property, which relieves the town of the financial and managerial responsibility associated with property ownership. In return, Situate will have 30 new affordable rental housing units forever. Of course, there is much to do after town meeting if you approve this, the funding tonight. No CPC or housing trust money will be spent until all of the appropriate legal agreements are negotiated and signed. Most importantly, the town will be diligent in making sure that these units will be affordable forever. And the reason I stress that is because we have asked the developer over and over and over again, "Does forever mean forever?" And we have been assured it means forever. So, for this investment, we will have 30 affordable housing units for our seniors forever. Document and photo preservation. The Historical Society is proposing a project that will preserve historically significant documents, photographs, and reference materials. The Society will manage the project and contribute 4,000 toward the total cost. Obviously, I'm not reading everything that is in the advisory book, because hopefully everyone here knows how to read, and I don't think we need to read the whole thing. But I'm just highlighting some of the salient aspects of these projects. The Mann Farmhouse, which is owned by the town, is in need of a new roof at an estimated cost of $24,950. We're also recommending restoration of two historic plaques. This was also presented to us by the Historical Society. They're proposing the restoration of the World War I plaque on the Edward Foster Bridge and the Timothy Hathaway plaque, which is located on Hathaway Road across from Country Club Circle. The total cost for both is $9,000, and they'll use the same process that was used to restore the William Cushing plaque down at Green Bush. The Driftway Dog Park. The two-acre dog park, which is being proposed by the nonprofit Friends of the Situate Dog Park, is on the Driftway next to Go Green. The property is owned by the town. The total amount to construct the park is estimated at $300,000. The applicant is requesting $48,900 from the CPC, with the balance coming from a grant from the Stanton Foundation. The foundation recently notified the town that it has approved the grant, so that is very good news. In addition, the funds, the Friends have agreed to maintain the park through local fundraising efforts. This application has been reviewed by numerous town boards and departments, including Conservation, Planning, Traffic Rules, Commission on Disabilities, DPW, and the Board of Selectmen. Beach mats and boardwalk. This application is sponsored by the newly-created Beach Commission. One of their first initiatives as a commission was a survey of Situate residents about our beaches. Residents identified easier access as a top priority. This proposal addresses that by installing flexible mats at Peggity, Minnit, Sand Hill, and Hummerock beaches, and a new boardwalk at Egypt Beach. Both mats and the boardwalk are ADA compliant. The total cost is $51,357. The Glades Road Pocket Park. The North Situate Beach Association is requesting $27,025 to create a pocket park on a rundown piece of land on the Henry Turner Bailey end of Glades Road. If you're an old-time person here, you'll remember Suzanne's Guest House. That's where it is. The CPC money will be used for site improvements, with the Beach Association contributing $5,000 for plantings. In addition, the Beach Association will maintain the park in the future. I will tell you that the CPC has been very concerned about not creating more costs for the town for upkeep. Where possible, we are asking applicants to work on upkeep for the various projects. So, Cedar Point, also known as the Lighthouse. The Cedar Point Association is requesting $20,000 to replace worn-out benches and trash receptacles. This is a much-needed improvement to the most photographed site in town. The cost of the project may be reduced if the town receives money from people wishing to purchase a bench in memory of a loved one. One of the four benches has already been spoken for, and I think possibly another bench as well. I will tell you also about that, that we did query the CPC coalition in Boston about the trash receptacles, and because these will be actually bolted to the ground, they're an allowable expense. Central field improvements. As we all know, the two softball fields at Central Park are unsafe and in need of repair. Town meeting approved funds in 2013 for this purpose, and that those funds are currently being used, you'll probably see the construction site out there for the north softball field. The funds we're requesting tonight, $131,000, will be used for the south softball field. And this request came from the Recreation Commission. Roach Field Improvements. This project is sponsored by Situate Little League. Parking at the town-owned, and I will emphasize, Roach Field is town-owned, field on Beaver Dam Road is limited and creates serious safety issues. This project has been reviewed by town boards and departments, including Conservation, Planning, Traffic Rules, Commission on Disabilities, DPW, and the Board of Selectmen. In the, in addition, the applicant held a meeting with the Butters to answer their questions and address their concerns. The total amount requested is $89,300. Finally, the Clapp Road Athletic Field Study. The Board of Selectmen has requested $40,000 for study to assess the possibility of putting athletic fields on town-owned land off Clapp Road west of 3A. This is for a study and conceptual design only. It will be used to determine possible uses for the town to consider in the future. I would like to thank my fellow committee members who have worked very diligently in reviewing all applications, many of which we had back two and three times. Penny Scott Pipes, the vice chair, who was also instrumental in helping us get the conservation restriction issue moving along that we voted to approve last night. Adam Conrad, Ann Burbine, Stephen Coulter, Doug Smith, Dan Fennelly, Gary Meyerson, and Tom McShane. And I would like to thank our administrative assistant, Mary Sprade, who keeps things going with intelligence and good spirits. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Conley, and thank you to the committee for the hard work. What I will do at this point is I'll go down through each of the 16 items. If someone would like to discuss any particular one of them, just say "hold," and then we'll proceed to a vote on the unheld items, and then we'll discuss the held items and take a vote. All right. Page 28. Number one. Number two. Number three. Four. Five is held. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Ten is held. Eleven. Eleven is held. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. All right. I'll accept a motion to approve all the unheld items. It's been moved, seconded, all those in favor of approving the unheld items, signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. All right. Returning to the held items, they are five, six, ten, eleven, and sixteen. So, I'm going to ask that the person who put the hold on each item be ready to come to the mic as we get to them. Number five.
Can I ask for the [inaudible]?
Of course.
[inaudible].
Ma'am.
On five and six together, in the beginning, it says that the Lawson Green Apartments will consist of 30 affordable senior rental units serving low-income residents aged 62, with preference given to Situate residents. In talking about this with other friends who have been to some meetings that I missed, my understanding was that that preference would only be for the initial move-in date, but that after that had happened, then it was opened up to people from other towns as well? So, I guess my question is, once it's filled and up and running, say, two or three years down the line after it is actually in operation, if you had a list of 10 people that wanted to get into a unit there, is preference still given to a resident from Situate, or is it just a first-come, first-served basis?
Since I can't know everything about every project, as you can imagine, we have the applicants here tonight. John Dewane is here from the Housing Authority, and Mike Cuchoira is here from the developer, and he's a particular expert in finance, which, you know, there may be some questions about. So, if I could ask the moderator, Mike doesn't live in Situate, may he come up?
I'll assume the consent of the meeting to allow him to speak to answer questions, unless I hear an objection.
Okay. Mike?
Well, let's wait. Okay.
So, between these two gentlemen...
Come on down.
Hopefully, they can answer the more detailed questions.
Thank you.
So, the question on the floor relates to the legality of requiring Situate-only residents and for the time, and the time period to which Situate preference can be given to applicants.
Yeah. Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's John Dewane. I'm a member of the Situate Housing Authority. As Mary said, this is Michael Cuchoira. He's one of the developers on the project, and he will speak to the Situate preference.
Thank you. Michael Cuchoira with the Grantham Group...
Mike could just pull the microphone up a little bit.
Oh, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Cuchoira with the Grantham Group, the developer on the project. The local preference issue concerns fair housing. Typically, the way the state allows you to create, a lot of the funding for this project is coming via state and federal resources. So, the state and federal resource programs allow for an initial local preference to be ascribed to the units. However, subsequent to that, fair housing laws apply, and then you have to allow anybody to apply for it. In this particular case, the Lawson Green Apartments project, the waiting list, et cetera, is going to be maintained by the Situate Housing Authority. The Situate Housing Authority maintains a very robust list. It is a waiting list that is extremely long, and so by, you know, by virtue of that fact, we would imagine that just the time period associated with being on the waiting list, that the majority of the apartments would likely end up in the hands of folks with some connection to Situate, be it a family member with a child residing within town, or so on and so forth. But it cannot be exclusively reserved for Situate-only people, because that violates, there's constitutional implications associated with that.
Thank you. And does that also include if you are on a waiting list and, say, you're number eight, and veterans come in? Right now, on the Housing Authority, veterans are, have, are given a preference over other people who are waiting, so sometimes your number moves up and down on that list. Would veterans also take a preference to this particular unit?
That isn't an issue that we've addressed yet, but we would certainly be open to looking at the veterans' issues. In some of our other facilities, veterans, we have a very substantial population of veterans in our other senior facilities. So, naturally, we would be open to that possibility.
Okay. So, then, on this statement, it's not just a preference given to Situate residents, it's the initial preference given to...
Correct. That's the way it has to be for federal fair housing compliance laws.
Okay. Thank you very much. This looks like a wonderful project, and I am in great support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lady to my left.
Hi, Cindy Olson, Gannett Pasture Lane. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, is the land that this proposed development going to be put on, it's current, my understanding is it's currently owned by the town. Will this land be sold to the developers for this project?
This is land that's owned by the Housing Authority. It's subject to HUD, HUD restrictions regarding affordable housing. So, what we're doing is subdividing existing land. It's essentially the backyard of the central school building that's currently used for affordable housing for seniors, so...
Excuse me, John. Was this the land that the town meeting transferred to the Housing Authority, what, about five years ago?
This is land that, no, it's not. It's land that's currently part of the parcel that exists as the central school building. So, we're subdividing land that is now the backyard of the central school.
My apologies. I'm sorry, ma'am.
But, well, it's currently, whether it's part of the Housing Authority or not, it's currently town-owned. Will it be sold to the developers for this?
The, the property will be transferred to the developer for a dollar. This is necessary in order to allow the developer to make the numbers worth work, to obtain the remainder of the funds they're going to need to complete the project. And those funds will be sought at a state and federal level to support the development of the project.
All right. So, the answer is simply yes, we are selling the land to the developer for $1, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. My next question, if I may ask, a couple more.
Sure.
The article says that it will be sold to people at 30 or, is it 3260 or 30 or 60 income AMI? And what is the AMI for, is it for Situate or for the state? And also, is the criteria to get into these units, is it income or net assets? So, for example, if perchance I was really lucky and had a million-dollar house and no income, could I sell my house, have a million dollars with zero income, and move into one of these? That's a lot of questions rolled up into one, but...
Yeah. Let's, would you like to repeat the first one, and I can take them one at a time?
I think the first and most relevant one is, what is the AMI? What number is that? And what do you mean by 3260 AMI in order to get into one of these units?
Well, AMI is adjusted median income, and the affordability levels are set at 80, 60, and 30 percent. This project, one of the reasons it's a good project for the town is that it addresses the 30 percent and the 60 percent level, and there are no units designated at the 80 percent level. These are, as opposed to what can be called an unfriendly 40B, 100 percent of these units are going to be affordable. And the current proposal is that eight will be at the 30 percent level, and the remaining, and the other 22 will be at the 60 percent level.
Great. But what is, I understood what the AMI was, but what is it? Is it based on town income, state income? And what is that number was my real question was?
Okay. So, the average AMI in Situate, the 2017 HUD median income for a family of four, which again, these are one-bedroom units, so is $103,400. To move into one of the 60 percent AMI units, income must be at or under $41,220 for a one-person household, and under $47,100 for a two-person household. These are the numbers as they exist now, and these are put out by HUD, so they are subject to change that we don't have any control over.
Okay, great. Thank you. And one more question. Is this the same company that was going to do or is going to do the development at the Green Bush MBTA parking lot?
No. My understanding is no. No.
All right. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
George P. Kelly, 450 Country Way. I went to the hearing that they had for this project. I raised the question as to why there aren't going to be at least a few two-bedrooms. Oh, that can't be done, because of all the rules and regulations that go with this particular feature that's being proposed. The second thing is that, in my own experience of over 60 years in real estate, the necessity for a two-bedroom unit is very, very much needed for husbands and wives, especially if one has any particular problem of sleeping or anything like that. And then, on this page, under number six, it looks to me like a gift of a million dollars is going to be, plus, they're only going to pay a dollar for the land that they're going to use to build on. And then, I tried to figure out another area that there is an investor involved, but he's, nobody knows, from what I could find out at that meeting, who that investor is going to be, and I wonder if this town is really ready for 30 more units of housing, and they only can be one-bedroom. Thank you.
As far as the one-bedroom units, that was something that we looked at, and with the units being designated as affordable for 62 and over, we thought that it was important to have mostly one-bedrooms to serve that community. And as far as how that went into the design and what the developer will have to do as far as the remaining funding that they'll need, I'll defer to him if I can on that point. So, would you want to speak to that?
Be happy to speak to that. The, the Situate is providing what's known as a local commitment to the project. Under the state's affordable housing development programs, the state now requires a significant local contribution to be made in support of affordable housing in order to attract their funding. The bulk of the funding for this project will be in the form of what's known as federal low-income housing tax credits, which is a program that was begun in the 1980s that allowed private investor, Fortune 500 companies to make investments in low-income housing in exchange for a tax credit. They don't do it out of the goodness of their hearts, they do it out of the goodness of their pocketbook. Part of the requirements associated with the state's program is that senior housing must be one-bedroom units, and the reason being is that they don't want, they want these units to go to empty-nester folks and not to, to children of, of the people that the units are actually intended to serve. Because once you're in the unit, it's, it's, you know, you have a certain rights associated with being in it. So, the program is very prescriptive in the way that it organizes design, so every element of the design of the unit is dictated by the state program. So, we are just operating within those parameters, and that's unfortunately the way, that's the way it works. You know, you, you take the king's money in this, in this case, with the state money, you have to live by their rules. I hope that was helpful.
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
James Hunt, 66 Manlot Road. In perpetuity is a very long time, and even though I fully intend to be around, I don't think most folks in this hall will be. So, exactly as specific as you can be, I asked Steve this question, but he bugged out to Hawaii. What specific contractual controls does the Housing Authority have in case our friends at Grantham decide to pull chocks and fly away?
I, I think that question was, was of utmost importance to us, too, and, and I'm an attorney who practices real estate, so in terms of deed and property for a dollar and... So in terms of deed and property for a dollar and, you know, our affordable restrictions really in perpetuity, those are things that are incredibly important to me and my view of the project. So the afford, the deed will contain a restriction that these are affordable in perpetuity, which, forever. And the question you have about, you know, what happens if the developer fails, I guess, I think it's kind of a two-fold question. Are you talking about prior to finishing the building or 15 years from now? And we've built into the agreement with the help of Town Council, into the development agreement, language that will allow the property to revert to situat should the project not reach completion. We've also received questions about, well, what happens if in 20 years from now, they're unable to continue the, the goal? We have statistics that only, what, about 1 in 85 of these have ever faced foreclosure. But regardless of what happens with their ability to repay their financing obligations, their restrictions will run with the land. So I'm comfortable and confident that, that that's been addressed through the documents we've put together thus far.
Fair enough. Thank you. Gentlemen to my right.
Steve Bjorkland, 38 Lad's Way. Is there anybody up the front of the room that can tell me exactly what we're selling? I mean, we're being asked to sell a piece of land for a dollar. Could you tell me how many square feet it is, or what it looks like, or how much frontage it has, or exactly where the piece of land is before you ask these people to sell it for a dollar? And I'm hugely in favor of affordable housing in this town. I always have been. This town needs it tremendously, but what are we selling?
Right. We're, without showing you the, the plan, which I think we still have out front here, the specific building plans we have had up online for quite a while, we have pictures you can look at today, but I suppose the best way I can describe it for everyone here so they will know exactly where this is, is we're subdividing a parcel that we already own, and we're essentially taking, again, for lack of a better descriptor, the backyard area of the existing central school and building, right where, essentially where the tree line is. If, if it's possible, I suppose we should show one of the renderings to give you a better idea of exactly where it is.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, being a developer, I can tell what we have, and what we have is, we do not have an engineered plan by a surveyor, and you're being asked to sell a piece of land for a dollar. They can't even tell you where it is. This should be postponed and done correctly.
May I ask, may, may I ask a question?
I, I think...
Well, hold on, hold on. I don't actually see the sale of land mentioned in the article, so...
That's right. That's a step that's to come later in the process. The vote tonight is a vote for the town to designate the funds for the project so that Grantham can then seek the remaining funds that are necessary to develop the building. No money will be dispersed to Grantham until they receive the remainder of the funding. And we will certainly, I mean, there will be ample time to describe the land between now, I mean, there's, there are so many levels of local approval and so much time from now until when a shovel hits the ground.
May I ask another question? And I apologize to the meeting, it's just, you know, once in a while I get curious about these things, too. Would any of this money be spent if the land sale was not approved by this body?
No. None of this land would be spent until, excuse me, none of the money would be expended until Grantham had received the remaining funds necessary to complete the project.
Thank you. Lady to my right.
Joanne Ball, 44 Rebecca Road. Is there still going to be room for a senior center to go in that area where it was originally planned in 2002? This is my biggest concern.
It's a very good question. This does not affect the parcel of land, which is more behind the library than, than this, this is a different parcel of land. If anything, it abuts it, but it is, it doesn't overlay with that parcel whatsoever.
Gentlemen to my right.
Gordon Price, 48 Manlot Road. Will there be additional opportunities for development on that piece of land that you're, you know, propose, talking about now, or are you going to pretty much max out on that, on that lot?
I think that's a question that's probably more appropriate for zoning and planning, but just going by the size of the lot, I, I don't think it would lend itself to any further development on that spot. I, I don't know what kind of development you're speaking of, but...
No, additional, same as what you're proposing now?
I think, I mean, I think that the project was sized to fit the space, so I, that's what they, that's as big as it's planning to be, yes.
And is the Housing Authority looking at any other pieces of land for possible development in the foreseeable future?
I don't want to speak for Chairman Coulter, but I, there aren't any projects right now that we're focused on, on any level that compares to this. So no, that's, that's...
Okay. Thank you.
Lady to my left.
Quick question. Oh, Beverly Westerveld, 12 Habview Road.
Thank you.
If we sell the land to Grantham, do they pay real estate taxes to the town?
My understanding is that yes, Grantham as a private entity will pay real estate taxes to the town. I, yes, so that's, that's the answer. Yes, they will be paying real estate taxes.
Gentlemen at the center, mic.
Thank you. Peter Cruz, Oceanside Drive. Two quick questions. Can you tell me what the current percentage of housing stock in situat is considered affordable? And two, can you briefly describe how the perpetual affordable rent process works? Thank you.
Well, to take the second question first, the perpetual, from a deed perspective, from the land perspective, perpetual means forever, restrictions that will run with the land. I apologize, but I, I do not have the existing numbers on, 4.5 is the, yeah, well, the percentage I do have, I don't have the actual number, but yes, 4.5 is the percentage we're at now, and the requirement is 10 percent.
All right. There being no one else at the mics, I'll bring both items five and six to a vote. Before I do, however, because of an important point that was addressed earlier in the meeting, I just want to make it clear that the motion for five and six, the motions are as follows. $900,000 for community housing, creation of affordable senior rental housing, that's number five. Six is $1 million for undesignated funds, creation of affordable senior rental housing. That's what you're voting on. There was a discussion earlier about preference to situat voters, and I will, with your permission, just ask for assurances from the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority that there will be in the transactional documents clauses to the effect that situat preference will be given to the extent lawful.
I was just going to add that, to the extent lawfully we can, yes.
And, and the board is not, so, just so that we're all clear on that before we vote. All right. All those in favor of approving, approving held items five and six signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a majority vote.
Thank you.
The next held item is number 10, dog park. Ah, thank you. Ma'am.
Elaine Gordon, 11 Hazel Labs, situat, obviously situat. First, a procedural question. Is this for discussion or only questions?
Oh, either.
Okay. You're going to get both, I guess. I am a senior. I've lived in this town for 45 years. I, like many of you who are sitting in these seats, have voted to support overrides, school expansions, new safety complexes, which rival the Yataj Mahal. But I am now part of the one-third of the population that is defined as seniors. And my housing at this point is in the senior center, which was an abandoned fire station when I moved in 45 years ago. And that is where one-third of your population's needs are being met. And it is a pitiful and a shameful situation. Now, I know a new senior center is not on the floor tonight. But I also want you to know that until such time as we address the needs of the senior population by at least planning the beginning of a senior center, I cannot support addressing the needs of another special needs, a special interest population. Quite frankly, having doggy playdates is not a priority for me, and I don't think it should be a priority for the use of my tax dollar. I invite everybody in this room to come down and visit the senior center, but you're going to have to come down like six at a time because that's what the parking makes available. And if you have a breathing problem, please be aware because you might not be able to stay in the building. And if perhaps there's more than one event taking place in that building, it's impossible because the reception area and the phone rings and carrying on any kind of business is a travesty. So I'm going to tell you, this Grammy's threw bacon cookies for others, and I'm going to urge you not to support attending to the needs of the puppy situation in this town. Quite frankly, those dogs, the owners wouldn't want our facility as a doghouse, and you're keeping your seniors there. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen to my left.
Andrew Boyle, 87 Hatherley Road. I would also like to talk about the senior population. I myself am not a senior, I hope one day to be. Many seniors I know have children that have moved on, that have grown up, that have left their homes. And what occupies their day, my parents included, not situat residents, but seniors all the same, what occupies their day are other members of their family. And those members of their family run around on four legs. And I'm not suggesting that we prioritize animals over children or seniors or really any other population. What I am asking everybody here to do is, please think about the quality of life for people that love their, and support their animals. That, that, these dogs are really members of their family. And right now, what we're asking, what the, what the group is asking for the town, the so-called special interest group, what we're asking is to grant a parcel of land which is, is, is really not usable for any other purpose in the shadow of a windmill, to create a safe space where everybody can go and to bring their dogs and, and to get out of the house, to, to, an accessible place, a place that's been, that's ADA compliant, that seniors can also use, that everybody can use, and can hopefully generate something, a special advantage in the town that gives us an additional tax base. Maybe, you know, pulls in a, a younger demographic that, you know, spends more at our businesses, pays higher prices for our real estate, increases our tax base. I think to posit this as an argument or as a dichotomy between the support of a senior center and the support of a dog park is, is unfair, though not malintentioned. I'd close by saying that dogs, you know, bring a lot of joy to people, and they, they really do need that space to run off-leash, and in the absence of that space, a lot of people use their yards. And not everybody can really, you know, afford to or tend to or make their yards totally secure. My neighbor's dog, about six months ago, got out of the yard, and I watched that dog get run over on Hatherley Road, and it was, it was really painful. And I hope, you know, nobody else ever has that experience here, and I hope that we have a place where we can, we can bring our pets and they can be safe. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the center, mic.
James Hunt, Manlot Road. My, my questions are much more mundane, unfortunately. The phrase "where possible" was used when it came to maintenance of, of this facility. I'm curious as to what funds will be or have been set aside for maintenance of a 23-car parking lot, the fencing, the turf, and the facility in general, so that it does not default to the Parks and Grounds Department? If you could specify that.
Well, as I, as I mentioned, that was a concern that we had as well, and the Friends of the Situate Dog Park are going to sign an agreement with the town that they will maintain it. And we won't release funds to them until we have a signed agreement that they will maintain the park.
And if they default, it will go to the town? Is that correct?
I guess it would, unless we sign some agreement that...
Right.
...holds them accountable in some way.
Did you, did you consider a bond?
A what?
A bond? Such as a developer posts a performance bond?
A bond.
A bond, yes, B-O-N-D.
We hadn't thought about it, if it's possible, you know, I think maybe that's something we could consider in the agreement.
I would recommend it. I support the article.
Yeah.
If, if there is some assurance that maintenance of the facility will not fall back on the taxpayer.
There's no question. I mean, the town administrators made it very clear to us that we shouldn't put forward projects unless we know how they're going to be maintained and who's going to maintain it. And, you know, we, we have not to date, as far as I know, had signed agreements with groups, but we certainly will in future. And the same situation with the North Situate Beach Association. We don't want to put money into that, CPC money into it, unless we're assured that it will be maintained.
Exactly.
And the Beach Association, which is going to be 100 years old this year, has promised they will do that, and we will have them sign an agreement as well because we need it for our documents, we need it for our, our paper trail. I don't want to have to have some chairman five, 10 years from now having to go looking for, you know, well, who said what, which we've had to do in the past, go back to Old Town Meeting minutes and, and minutes of CPC meetings to find out what exactly was said. So we'll have agreements in place.
And I, that's admirable, and agreement is, is a good thing. In my experience, however, anybody who develops this size of a parcel with 23 parking spaces and that size of a, a facility is required to post a bond, and I would recommend that. Thank you.
Point well taken, yes.
Speaker to my left.
Mary Ellen Schloss, Manlot Road.
I'm sorry, I've recognized the speaker to my left.
This is Adrian Roll, she's the...
I'm sorry, I've recognized the speaker to my left. Ma'am.
Thank you. Mary Ellen Schloss, Manlot Road. I have a question about how this project falls under the community requirements for community preservation spending under CPA, which I understand has to be affordable housing, historic or open space recreation. And did anybody check with the Community Preservation Coalition to confirm that this isn't in fact a legitimate expenditure?
We are allowed to create parks with CPC money.
Does that include dog parks?
I don't think it excludes them.
Did anybody check with Community Preservation Coalition?
No, we didn't, nor do we have to.
All right. Question for Town Council.
What?
Could you just answer the question as to the legality of the use of CPA money for creation of dog parks?
Brandon Moss, Town Council. It falls within a CPA purpose. It's recreational, and it's recognized under Section 5 of the CPA.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am. Oh, okay. Next speaker to my left.
Hi, Britton Davis, 111 Lawson Road. I am on the committee of the Friends of the Situate Dog Park, and I just wanted to come and say that the reason that we are making a plea to the town to grant us this space that is, as, as earlier, unwanted to the town, basically, it's under the, the wind turbine and not very desirable to the town for just two acres of land to designate a fenced-in area for dogs to run off-leash. You know, we have a huge population of dog owners in this town, and the only spaces to take our dogs are to the, the local parks and trails, and we have a lot of complaints by people who are not dog owners or who are dog, dog owners but are maybe a little more responsible than others. but are maybe a little more responsible than others, that dogs are running off leash, dogs are allowed to use the bathroom and not being cleaned up after. And this is a space where people can go to actually, that it's allowed to have your dogs run off leash, that people will clean up after each other, be held accountable for that. And, you know, I just, I would find it hard to understand if someone thought this wasn't a good idea for the town. Now, if you make an argument that we should have a senior center before something like this, I would absolutely have to agree with you. We do need a senior center, and that's very important for this town. And I don't think that you would find anyone in support of this dog park that wouldn't agree with that. But I do think this is, you know, this is funded by a private grant. It's not a lot of money for the town to invest. There will be fundraising activities to raise money for this park, and that will be ongoing. And it will be, for the most part, self-sufficient, so I can't understand any argument against that. It would be a very big benefit for this town, so I just wanted to leave you with that, and that's about it.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Elaine Chambori, Fifth Avenue in Situate. Just to join in the chorus, I'm obviously a senior. I would obviously love a wonderful new senior center that would accommodate all of our needs, especially parking. I believe that we are in the process of developing an RFP for proposal for which site might be the best for that, so I don't think that this project in any way conflicts with our desire for a new senior project, a new senior center, which is obviously very much needed in this town. And I will speak from experience as I take my little bitty dog for multiple walks and find these big, huge deposits of defecation from somebody other than my little dog, because, believe me, I have plastic bags in every pocket of everything that I own to pick up my dog deposits. There are not a lot, there's, I don't want to say it's not a lot, but I'm not the only one that does that, I'm not the only one that notices that. I know that my dog does not, and my dog is little, but he does not even like to go into McEckern Park in the conservation area because the area is disgraceful. It is filled with defecation from animals that are let off leash. They're not supposed to be off leash in there. I am in favor of dogs being off leash in a confined area, and that's what this is supposed to be proposing and funding. And as Britt said, the majority of this funding is coming from a private grant. So I would just ask everybody to think about how this funding will impact the town. Thank you.
Lady in the white coat.
Pardon me?
You.
Okay, very good.
This is Adrian Roll, she was the applicant and has worked very hard to put this forward, so if you don't mind, she says a few words.
Yes, I'm the president of the Friends of Situate Dog Park. My committee is sitting up there. I just want to let you know how much research we have done in order to select this location. We did about six weeks of petition. We had virtually every merchant in town with a piece of paper where their patrons would come in and sign their name in favor of the dog park. We also did a couple of weekends at the transfer station, and I want you to realize that we had over fifteen hundred signatures in a matter of six weeks, part-time. That was more than what the selectmen voted in one day in the town. This town really, really wants the dog park. I also want you to know that I volunteer my time at the senior center, and the seniors are very, very near and dear to me. This is completely pro bono, this is completely on my time, and I made sure that this dog park and my committee, that we made sure that this dog park was going to be ADA compliant and will be the poster child as an ADA compliant dog park in the state of Massachusetts. It will be the first one. We have put everything forth to make that happen, and with recognition of the seniors. In this case, seniors will be able to come and let their dogs off leash, they will have level paths, walking paths, to the ADA compliant engineering, and they will be able to let their dogs off leash. And that's very important for the dog's health. They will also have a small wash area that will be one-hundred percent secure, so that if they have a wheelchair or a walker or a large dog, they can walk in, close the gate behind them, and they will have digital-type watering hoses that will turn off as soon as they, they have sensors, so they turn off as soon as they walk away. So this was really designed for disabled people and for seniors that want to have socialized time with their pets. And we also are incorporating the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, who will get credits for building benches, and those benches will be donateable items for our fundraising. And we will also, to address a question from Jim, there's been a slight change that we are now going to have cedar wood chips, or shall I call it mulch, in lieu of grass, which is virtually very little maintenance, it won't require any water. So our annual maintenance at this time is down to five thousand dollars a year. We'll be doing some type of a themed dinner dance or perhaps a murder mystery theater dinner for, say, two hundred. And we should be able to raise between ten and fifteen thousand dollars a year without any question and be able to utilize a portion of that money for other nonprofits that may be struggling or other situations. So we'd like to be able to give back with as much as we possibly can. Further, and then I'll end on this, the Stanton Foundation, who has approved our request, allows us to go back a couple of times in the first five years for additional funding and for expansion. So that part is also covered for more major funding. Thank you very much. I hope you'll consider our application.
Gentlemen to the right.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Brad White, and I am a resident of Marshfield and would like to respectfully request permission to address this. Former resident of Situate for twenty years.
All those in favor of allowing Mr. White to speak signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Folks, I am the former chairman of the Marshfield Bark Park. We had a ten-person committee that worked seven years, and on our town meeting floor we were defeated on the second night. And the reason for that was lack of knowledge and also lack of funding. I one-hundred percent applaud this group for their efforts with the Stanton Foundation, who I looked up last night, Mr. Stanton was the founder of CBS News, a very wealthy foundation, and they fund ten to fifteen parks per year in the state of Massachusetts, top-notch, A number-one design. In Situate, annually, there's a fifteen thousand dollar revenue line item for dog licenses. That equates to about twelve hundred and fifty dogs, as ratified today by the town clerk. In Marshfield, we have four thousand dogs. So a dog park is an incredible recreational passive place for people to go recreate outdoors with their pet, and it does not hurt the earth. When I had a chance to review the plan at the selectman's meeting, I was duly impressed on the following. Very well-thought-out fence system, entry-and-exit gate system, so dogs don't scamper out. The maintenance plan was a lot better than we had thought through. The size of the park is perfect for the number of dogs being twelve hundred in the town of Situate. The ADA compliance, as we just heard, is superior. And I would recommend for this park the use of natural mulch. As a dog owner that uses Conservation Park quite frequently, maybe five or six times a week, natural mulch is imperative because the dyed mulch will kill an animal. And the only place you can get the natural mulch that I have found is up on Union Street in Marshfield between the two gas stations. I have two questions, and one is, and I heard a little bit earlier tonight, with the use of this dog park, I hope that it does not relegate all dogs to only that location so that we can continue to recreate En Wampatuck Conservation Park and the golf course during the wintertime. That is question number one. And question number two is, as I recall as a kid growing up in Situate, we used to have access through the cornfield there down to the marsh so we could fish, hunt, and clam. Understanding it's going to be a good sizable parking lot, I hope those rights are not precluded on being able to access the marsh. So I urge you to vote positively for the Bark Park. I'll give you one hint of something we learned, is that I would also offer naming rights because somebody will step up to the plate and write a big check if they could name their park after one of their loved ones. So I urge you to vote positively, and thank you.
Gentlemen to my right.
Good evening, Bill Schmidt, thirty-three Egypt Road. Not to pile on here, but I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, and I talked to my boss, and he said this is going to be okay. We met with this group several times, they've done a lot of homework, they keep coming back after investigating sites, and we work very closely with them on this. We voted unanimously to support this in the town comp. And also, I wanted you to consider that, you know, with a place for the dogs to go, it's going to open up other spaces that where normally people bring their dogs, like the bottom of the anthill, that'll start to clean up as we migrate the dogs towards the park. So I think this is a very good idea for the town. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
John Jensen, three-again Paschalane. I got a question about liability. If, heaven forbid, a dog attacks another dog or even a person, is the town liable? Can the town get dragged into a lawsuit, or does it all fall on the Friends of the
Town Council to address the question.
Brandon Moss, Town Council.
There is a recreational use statute under state law that immunizes property owners from liability where land is used for recreational purposes without charge to the public.
So in other words, if you can get, no, if you can get in for free, the town has liability, has no liability, pardon me.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Anne Burbine, Ten Penny Chris Road. I move the question.
Okay. We won't vote on that motion because there's no one else at the microphones. We're voting on item number ten, forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars on designated funds, creation of dog park. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
Well, nice try. That really was pretty good. It passes by a majority vote. Item number eleven. Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Mr. Moderator, George B. Kelly, four-fifty Country Way. I goofed on not asking a hold for the roof of the man barn. A number of years ago, the students of Volk Tech rebuilt the barn, and from whatever I found out, it was very, very instrumental in the kids learning about old tools and things like that that the teachers, and I just want to say, they ought to get an opportunity to at least offer them the chance to do the roof. Thank you.
Did David Ball hear that?
Lady to my left.
Jean Rankin, forty-five Marshall Avenue. On number eleven, I'm delighted to see that we're putting money into our beautiful resources of Situate's beaches because it's a jewel in our crown. Concerning Egypt Beach in particular, with the boardwalk, it says that it'll be wide enough and go to the parking lot for two wheelchairs. I don't know if anyone's been to that parking lot recently. No one in a wheelchair could get through it. It needs to be paved, it looks like Syria right now. When is that parking lot going to be paved? Is it part of this boardwalk? Because I don't think anyone who's handicapped could get to the boardwalk with the current condition of the parking lot. That's my first question, and what the timing is is my second question.
Could I answer that question so I don't forget it? I was just told that that parking lot is on the five-year capital plan.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
It means it's scheduled to be done.
Do we have a timeframe?
Not for fiscal eighteen.
So we'll have a new boardwalk, but we'll have the old parking lot for one year?
Right, it's not part of this article.
Well, hold on, hold on, hold on. The lady may ask questions, and...
It's a concern because I know there's work being done there by the DPW, and they stated that they were just going to pave over the area that they have torn up, but the rest of the parking lot is really in disarray. It's got a lot of holes in it. So I'd love that we're fixing up Egypt Beach, I'm all for it, I'm just concerned with the state of the parking lot and the building of new boardwalks.
I think the, I think the selectmen have your point in hand.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, there being no one else at the microphones for number eleven, all those in favor of number eleven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Item number sixteen. Gentlemen to my right.
Good evening, my name is Pete Toppin. I live on Clapp Road. I've lived there for, my wife and I have been there for forty-three years. And we bought our property at number twenty-six from a gentleman named John Barnard. And at the time our land was sold to us, he resuraved three lots which are involved in this Article sixteen. Those lots are the lots which come out to Clapp Road next to our house. Those lots were given by him to the town in nineteen seventy-eight because they failed to perk, and they were turned over to conservation immediately. Now, when the study concept came up for the land swap land, okay, these three lots were not included. It was a twenty-five thousand dollar study to deal with the land slot swap property, okay, which is shown as parcel three on the map they've handed out. The two, three acres and the one, two-acre lot, which abut my property, were not included. Now, we're not suggesting that we're going to modify or make an amendment on this study, but there are points to ponder. Those three lots were perked tested in nineteen seventy-eight, and they failed. Those three lots are considered wetlands by the town. In the forties, fifties, and sixties, there was an area there called Patty's Pond, and all the kids in the West End used to go skating on those three lots. I would like to ask the Conservation Commission to verify where there is an easement for conservation purposes which runs from the Whitney Woods Project up through parcel one into parcel two, if we could get somebody to speak on that.
Can anyone answer the question?
Frank Snow for the Conservation Commission. Just to be clear, Mr. Toppin, you're asking about an easement or a right-of-way to the right of your property?
That is correct.
So there is a small path, cart path, if you will, that goes to between your house and the Bacon's property, for not many people in here already know that, but there's a small strip there, it's shown on the, on this drawing that was passed out, and that travels into a piece of property, and when Witcomb Pines was constructed... And when Wickham Pines was constructed, one of the agreements with Wickham Pines was a walking path would be created from the town forest on 3A back to Clap Road. And that was built by a couple of sculpt projects.
Okay. Thank you. I would suggest that if anybody wants to take a walk through these parcels of land, if you do that, you're going to get muddy, you're probably going to get stuck, because those are wetlands. And our point is, we don't think that if a study is done involving those three parcels, that we're going to be able to build on them anyway, because they are wetlands. All right? The drainage from Clap Road passes through those lots, down through parcel three, and under Booth Hill Road at a location adjacent to what some of you may remember it was Woolly Wing Farm. And that water all drains down to Bound Brook and Cohasset. Those woods, we moved in 1974. Those woods are far wetter now than they were when we moved in. We have scum cabbage which comes up in those wetlands areas now. And the idea of putting a road, an access road, through there just does not make sense. These are points to ponder as we go forward. And yes, if we vote on a study, is my opinion, that that study will support where we're coming from. Thank you.
Gentlemen to my left.
Bernie Westerfeld, 12 Harborview Road. I read in Article 16 the word "wetlands." The gentleman just spoke about that. Is any part of Article 16, any of the lots, are they designated as wetlands?
To answer the question, Selectman Vignani.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that? Any of the three lots, are they wetlands? Is that your question? Correct. Part of the property up there, there's 16 acres of land that we're looking at. We actually got 27 acres of land, as you all remember. Two years ago, there was a land swap for an acre and a half of land at the end of the town forest, so that people could have safe access in the development that's going up there. Wickham Pines was going to develop, I think they said, 36 condos on this land. We swapped it with them to look for recreational fields. There are definitely parts of the property that are wet, but we've had a preliminary wetland delineation that says there's definitely dry land up there as well. And that's what this study is for, to see what can actually happen on the dry land that is up there. Two parts of the property up there already has a conservation restriction on it. So 10 acres of the 27 acres that we got is already under restrict, I don't think there's a CR on it, but there is definitely a restriction on that property. And there is dry land up there, and that's what the reason why we swapped for the land was to see what can go up there. Right now, we don't know how, we don't know if it could be one field, a playground, three fields, and that's what this study is to find out. And anyone that has kids in this town knows that we are at a shortage of fields right now, with all the construction that's going on and all the kids that are playing sports nowadays. I hope I answered your question.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we exclude wetlands from Article 16. I would like to see that the town does not do anything about developing wetlands into anything. The town cannot develop on wetlands.
Well, let's hold on. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. Let's just be clear on this motion. What is on the floor is to spend, a proposal to spend $40,000 from undesignated funds for the study of town-owned land at Clap Road for playing fields. So your motion, if adopted, would preclude the town from studying the wetlands. Is that your intention?
Yes.
All right. Further discussion on the proposed amendment.
It's wet.
That's all right, that's all right. All right, there being none, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, to exclude the study of wetlands on the proposed site signify by saying aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Motion fails. All right. Lady to my left.
Mary Ellen Schloss, Manlot Road. It does appear from looking at both Google Earth and the mass GIS data viewer that the entire, all of this area is currently wooded, you know, substantial amount of it is wet. It also is adjacent to priority habitat of rare species. A small part of it is priority habitat. I just wondered why we're looking to build playing fields on wooded land. I mean, there's probably other land that can be used for fields. It just seems ridiculous to me to be using wooded land for playing fields, which require, you know, a large amount of just cleared area. So I know town meeting, you know, supported the land swap, but I just, this just seems like a wrong spot for recreational fields. So that's more a comment than it is a question.
Speaker to my right.
Ben Bornstein, First Parish Road. I have a question. Given the shortage of land in this town, these parcels have tremendous economic, ecological, and recreational value to the townspeople. Has a study been conducted to explore all of the different land use options for this site?
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
Has a prior study been conducted to explore all of the different land use options for this site?
And Mr. Vignani, I'll also give you leave to address the prior point.
I think that's a broad question. I don't think we've looked at every use of that property. I know that when we made the trade, as I mentioned two years ago, that the main reason for that trade was to try and find a recreational component of that, knowing that there was going to be a conservation component of it as well, and connection to the other 500 acres or so of restricted land that we have up in the West End.
Given that there hasn't been a holistic evaluation of this land, I propose to make an amendment to this article, or this section of the article. Is that...
Well, let me just make a point on that. Technically, I was interested in hearing the sense of the meeting on the prior amendment, which failed. Technically, matters that are put forward in a CPC article are up or down votes. So while I think it was useful to get a sense of the meeting on the last one, I would probably be taking a step too far in violation of the law to continue to entertain amendments. So I must respectfully say no.
No problem. I'll just understand, but I'll follow up with a comment then. I recommend to the townspeople that we, it feels to me like we're putting the cart before the horse on this land, and I recommend that the money be spent towards a holistic evaluation to explore all of the potential land uses and not specifically playing fields. Thank you.
Gentlemen at the center, mic.
Dan Fenley, 10 Highland Crossing. I was a member of the Recreation Subcommittee that evaluated the fields in town and investigated what the future of Situate for our children would be. What we found was, there's about 2,500 acres that the town owns. 900 acres are in conservation. Almost 1,000 acres are in conservation. Out of that remainder, about 900 is open space, and about 500 is occupied by town buildings. Out of that 900 acres of open space, what we were looking for were locations that we could put fields or recreation facilities on. What we found was, out of those 900 acres, there are three locations in town that you could put more than one field. The land swap is one of them. There's another property that I don't think anyone wants to touch or discuss tonight. And there's a third property that you could put more than one field. In addition to that, if you looked at putting one field, which is a property that's two acres or about two acres, there's only six other properties in town. That means there are nine locations in town that have the potential, just because of size, for a field. If you look at the properties that we're talking about, they include things like the Old Town Dump. And I don't think anybody wants to put children on the Old Town Dump, playing soccer or lacrosse or whatever. It includes some other locations that just aren't usable. So the town is very limited from a perspective of, what are we going to do with recreation? What are we going to do with the fields that we have? In 2007, 10 years ago, a study was done for the town of Situate by a private company that at that time said we needed 11 more fields in Situate. Since that time, the fields have been overused, overutilized. It makes it more expensive to maintain, and it provides, in some cases, an unsafe environment for our children. I think this project is a good project that will investigate the possibility of putting fields at a location in town, and we don't have a choice. The question came up about putting it in a wooded area. The town doesn't have a choice. If you look at any of those nine locations that I mentioned, some of which are not usable, all of them are wooded, in some respect. So the point I'm making is that we have very limited facilities in town, very limited properties in town, that we can increase the recreation of the town. After that study in 2007, and fairly recently, they were recommending 11 more fields in town. Since then, we've lost at least four fields, that I know, due to construction or other types of activities in town. So the towns, the fields are overused, there are issues with who's playing where, there are conflicts. They're played 12 months a year almost, in some cases, or 10 months a year. And that puts wear and tear in the field, which increases the maintenance cost. And everybody knows the maintenance cost is not going down, it's going to go up. So we need more fields in town, and I think that answers the question why we're looking at wooded areas to put additional fields. There's no other choice. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Nancy Toppin, 26 Clap Road. I know it's a little bit verging on not in my backyard, but I have two questions. One for the Conservation Commission. The 25-5 parcels, it was our understanding that those particular parcels are conservation land, and I just want to confirm that those actually were transferred to the Conservation Commission, rather than just being vague about it. If Mr. Snow could answer that question?
If he wishes to.
I'll do my best. The parcels that you have in question, I'm not quite clear on.
The ones, if you look at the map, the ones that come between our house and the Bacon's house that are marked 25-5 are to right, but those three lots, actually, I guess there are only two that are marked, no, there are three, that are 25-5.
Selectman Vignani has been consulting with various people when he has an answer for you.
So the lot that you're referring to is, the town administrator went to the assessor's office and found that it's coded under code 930, which is not conservation, it's vacant property.
Okay. Because we were told as a butters several years ago, that that had come under the purveyance or whatever of the Conservation Commission. So that was why I was asking, because that was what, you know, we thought. My second question, is there any possibility of another outlet from those fields going up toward the town forest, or, I mean, any place besides that wetlands? Because, I mean, it's soaking wet, and I don't know how you would bridge it, or whatever you might do. Has any consideration been given to any other kind of access to that uplands? And I know that's uplands in there, but, you know, just has anybody thought about any other way they could get to that land?
So that's exactly what the purpose of this study is. We're trying to find out what it is at a glance. I mean, I have a picture of the property here with colors that you may, it'd be easier to see. The yellow piece is the non-conserved land, and the green is conservation. From my eye, it doesn't look like it, but that's what we want to find out, what it is. And I remind you that one of the reasons why we swapped this property is that they were going to put a development of condominiums back there, on probably these same two access points, if not just one. So, and we did this change specifically, it says, two years ago, for recreational purposes. But in that study, we will look at any possible way to ease the entry and access points of the...
Thank you. But my understanding was that that original development would not have come down to Clap Road. And at this point, you have two access sites on Clap Road within three houses of each other, for a very lot of traffic, at a very bad intersection of Clap, Manlot, and Grove. So just, you know, be sure that is emphasized if you do the study, because that's a major, major issue for everybody in the West End who has a leaching field, if anything happens with that water flow, but also just for the traffic on Clap Road, which is supposedly a scenic road. So just be sure, be sure to ask those questions.
Lady to my left.
Cindy Olson, Gannett Pasture Lane. I have a question and some comments. My first question, I'm not exactly clear where these parcels of land are. You say Clap Road, but could you explain where on Clap Road? Is it near Booth Hill, the intersection of Clap and Booth Hill, or where?
There's a map that was handed out. I don't know, I mean, does any, Strom, what's the exact number? Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not that far from Manlot. Frank can help you with the exact location.
So, and this is the Wickham Pines. So it's a parcel that's right off of here.
So in between here. That's Booth Hill, right in there. All right. Great. Thank you. He's just explained where on the map. So at our last town meeting in October, I believe it was, we voted to spend $100,000 to put in an irrigation system for one of our fields because of our water issues. And last night, we voted to spend a lot of money to re-turf a different field. And tonight, we've spent in '14 and '15 more money for fields, and now we're asking for more money for more fields. I feel like we've spent enough on fields, and I don't really want to spend this money to do this study. And I also feel like it would be better served for open space in this area as opposed to a field. So I hope people voting would consider to vote against this in light of all these other field things that we've just approved. Thank you.
Lady at the center, mic.
Andrea Hunt, Manlot Road. A couple of questions came up in response to the gentleman who spoke of the need for playing fields in Situate, and a study that was done in 2007 requesting or suggesting that 11 fields were needed. 2007 was quite a while ago, and my understanding in talking to Mr. McCarthy, Superintendent of Schools, and in light of things going on with the school committee, that the demographic studies show that our students are decreasing, and there's even a possibility that we may be combining elementary schools. Is that, in fact, do demographic studies show that our student population is, in fact, decreasing?
Well, that, I think, is beyond the scope of what we're discussing. If you were making a statement that they were decreasing, that's one thing, but to start inquiring into school enrollment and school consolidations, I think it's just a step too far.
Then I will make a statement that, to my knowledge, the school population is decreasing. And with that, if there are schools that are combining, we will have the opportunity in the future to have areas for playing fields that are not in wooded areas, that are, if Hathley and Central Cushing are combined, there would be an area to increase playing fields. There's also playing fields behind the Gates School, and it will be coming under study that we'll be looking at what to do with the Gates School and the property behind it. That playing field is also a possibility to look at that is not wooded area. it. That playing field is also a possibility to look at that is not wooded area.
Gentleman at the center, Mike, for the second time. Three-minute limitation.
Dan Fenley, Ten Highland Crossing. To address the questions that were just raised, I believe we would not have additional space for fields. Particularly the sites that were mentioned in the previous speaker are already being used for fields. Gates has extensive soccer, lacrosse, and baseball that's played behind it. The other fields are used for various recreational activities and programs that don't include organized sports, they're used by the schools, et cetera. So my feeling is that those would not be an increase, it would just be the same fields that we're using today. The other comment I'd make about the decrease in population, I agree. I believe that the population of children in schools has gone down since 2007. I don't think that negates the need for fields. We have 5,000 people, 5,000 children registered in programs, okay? Multiple children registered in programs. But if you look at the organizations for the youth sports, there are 5,000 registrations. That's an awful lot of players that are out there in different sports. And granted, it's not 5,000 children, but it is 5,000 activities going on with each child every year. Thank you.
Selectman Vignani.
I'd like to ask Mark Lancy, our Rec Commissioner, to just answer your questions about the need for the fields in the town. She's the one that coordinates all of that.
Hello, my name's Mark Lancy, 61 Kenneth Road. I am a resident of Situate. I also am the Recreation Director. We permit the fields here in Situate, and there's a desperate need for fields. The lack of fields in this town has been known for a while. We have developed a subcommittee, and it's all of the youth groups put together. They meet twice a month. They discuss fields and the need of them. This land swap was predicted to look at for additional fields. We're looking, Mr. Fenley did extensive work looking for fields all over the town, and spent hours upon hours of looking for different areas for fields. We desperately need them. The kids need to play. We don't have enough fields to permit our youth groups. I don't know what to say. I think this town really needs to step up and take care of the youth. And also, and we need your help. We do need fields. We need dog packs, we need sealies, and we need fields for the kids.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Ann Burbine, Penny Press Road. I move the question.
There being no one else at the mics, the motion is well timed. But we'll go right to the vote. On item number 16, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Let's try it one more time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So voted and declared passed by a majority vote. Any seven persons who wish to challenge my determination may raise, and we will take a counted vote. I see seven people. Will the towers take their places? All right. All those in favor, please hold up your green voting cards. Okay. Hmm? Oh, all right. Thanks. Are we ready? Right rear bleacher. Heather?
Hi.
Sorry.
Five.
Five. Right front bleacher?
Three.
Three. Right rear floor?
Eight.
Eight. Right center floor?
Four.
Four. Right front floor, including advisory committee and school committee?
Yes.
Okay, and the selectmen?
Fifty.
One five. Left rear bleacher?
Five.
Five. Left front bleacher?
Two.
Two. Left rear floor?
Fourteen, one four.
Thank you. One four. Left center floor?
Twelve, one two.
One two. Left front floor includes moderator, clerk, and registrars.
Left front floor is just this area here?
Yeah.
Okay. The count there is nine.
Nine. All right. All those opposed? All right. Just hold on for one second. I think you can put your cards down. Kathy, would you go talk to Peter and just describe to him what the left front, well, I want it right? All right. I'm going to ask the left front floor, and Madam Clerk will assist you in the delineation of the left front floor. If you're voting in favor, please hold up your cards.
Favor.
In favor. We are recounting the left front floor. So if you're voting yes, card up. Okay. Left front floor includes moderator, clerk, and registrars?
Ten.
Ten. Okay. All those opposed, please hold up your green voting cards.
Six.
Thank you, Heather. Right front bleacher?
One.
Thank you, Frank. Right rear floor?
Four.
Thank you. Right center floor?
Thirteen, one three.
One three. Thank you. Right front floor, including advisory committee, school committee, and Board of Selectmen?
Three.
Three. Thank you, Penny. Left rear bleacher?
One.
One, two. Left front bleacher?
Zero.
Zero. Left rear floor?
Seven.
Seven. Left center floor?
Five.
Five. Left front floor includes moderator, clerk, and registrars?
Two.
Two. By a vote of 78 in favor and 56 against, the motion passes. At this point, I would like to take a moment to thank Madam Town Clerk and John Capalupo, who is running the soundboard, for setting up, I'll call it the listening post, in the center of the auditorium. It's a wonderful thing, and both of these individuals deserve the credit for doing this post. Article 12 on the motion. Selectman Curran.
Good evening. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town rescind the balance of funds authorized but unexpended from prior community preservation projects totaling $589,526, and transfer said funds into the Community Preservation Committee Reserve or General Fund Balance from which they were originally appropriated, as the case may be, in accordance with the Community Preservation Act as follows. Driftway Bike Pedestrian Path, Article 18, from the ATM of 2007, of $5,461. Situate Marine Park, Article 19, from the 2008 Annual Town Meeting, for $21,109. The Driftway North River Project, Article 19G, from the 2008 Annual Town Meeting, for $47,244. The Wheelwright Land Project, Article 13-6, from the 2010 Annual Town Meeting, for $3,805. The North Situate Train Canopy Project, from Article 17-11, in the 2011 Annual Town Meeting, for $316. Hubble Land Project, for Article 17-6, from the 2011 Annual Town Meeting, for $10,653. The Gannett Road Path, Article 17-16, 2011 Annual Town Meeting, for $17,103. The Higgins-McAllister Land Project, for Article 16-5, from the 2012 Annual Town Meeting, for $20,065. The William Cushing Plaque Project, from Article 16-11, in 2012 Annual Town Meeting, for $228. The Situate Historic Bike Path, Article 16-14, from 2012 Annual Town Meeting, for $13,988. The Nicholas Wade Litchfield Land Project, from Article 16-6, from the 2012 ATM Meeting, for $3,258. The Little Red Schoolhouse Roof Project, from Article 12-10, from the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, for $145. The Town Archives Preservation Project, from Article 12-13, from the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, for $510. The Lighthouse Preservation and Seawall Project, from Article 12-17, from the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, for $620. The Harbor Walk Phase II Project, from Article 12-13, from the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, for $58,541. The Situate High School Athletic Complex Project, from Article 12-15, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, for $350,000. Basketball Court Project, from Article 12-16, from the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, for $36,075. And the Skate Park, from Article 13-8, from the 2014 Annual Town Meeting, for $405.
Second moved and seconded. Discussion. Selectman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And just for note for folks there who are looking at your advisory books, there have been a couple of changes. For two of those that you may have noticed in the motion, the Situate Historic Bike Path, as well as the Harbor Walk Phase II, both of those line items were, the CPC Committee was notified late after the publication of the book that there were some outstanding bills. So that's why those amounts have changed with regards to what you may have in your advisory book. So this article really is just a housekeeping article, to put back unused and unencumbered balances from projects previously back into the general fund to be used for projects moving forward. The largest one that we're putting back in, the High School Athletic Complex, for $350,000. The CPC feels, as well as the Board supports their motion to do this, that much has changed in the last couple of years since that project was brought forth. Costs have changed, plans have changed, and the landscape of the high school obviously has changed. So any look to improve any fields in that complex, obviously, will need some reevaluation. So that we support this unanimously, the motion that's before you tonight.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Heinrich.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory Committee also unanimously voted in support of the rescission of all of these amounts. As Selectwoman Curran said, these are routine items to bring back funds that were not used on these projects, or were more than necessary for the projects. It's a testament to the work of the Community Preservation Committee and the Chairwoman Connolly, in that they've done a lot of work in making sure that these funds do come back when the projects don't happen. We also had some discussion about the $350,000 for the Situate High School Athletic Complex, and agreed with the Community Preservation Committee and the selectmen that because of the significant changes there, any further project, it would make sense to come back and completely revamp with a new project, rather than have those funds stay out there. Again, the committee voted unanimously in support. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article 13 on the motion. Selectman Danahue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you very much for coming back this evening. Mr. Moderator, I move the town assume liability in the manner provided by Mass. General Laws, Chapter 91, Section 29 as amended, for all damages that may be incurred by work to be performed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for the improvements, or improvement, development, maintenance, and protection of tidal and non-tidal rivers and streams, great ponds, harbors, tidal waters, foreshores, and shores along a public beach in accordance with Section 11 of said Chapter 91, and authorize the selectmen to execute and deliver a bond on indemnity, therefore, to the Commonwealth.
It's been moved, seconded. Discussion. Selectman Danahue.
Thank you. Folks, this is a kind of a regular housekeeping article that we do. In essence, the DEP will not be performing any work along our shores. Dredging is the example that's used in your advisory handbook. Obviously, there's also foreshore protection. We're dealing with easements, and this is a statute. So we assume the liability, and therefore, DEP will do the work. Also, that's when the Commonwealth will give you the money, which we received a number of grants for. So at this point in time, in order to have that happen, we need to vote this in for just this year. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As John mentioned, this is an annual article. We hear it every year. It's routine. Town would assume the liability for the damages as a result of the state performing various maintenance work, as outlined here on the advisory booklet. The committee recommended unanimous, eight to zero vote, in support of the motion. Thank you.
Discussion. There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Folks, the light is at the end of the tunnel, and we're moving to a real high point in the meeting. On the motion, Selectman Danahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town amend the zoning bylaw to establish a temporary moratorium on the cultivation, sale, distribution, possession, and use of recreational marijuana to allow development and potential adoption of local regulations by adding the new Section 491, Temporary Moratoria, and subsection 491.1, Temporary Moratorium on the Sale and Distribution of Recreational Marijuana, as fully set out and printed in your Advisory Committee booklet, provided to all the voters this evening.
So moved and seconded. Selectman Danahue, before you begin, I have to say, I saw a lot of frowny faces when you finished that motion. So this will be a very interesting vote. So carry on.
Thank you. Folks, this is dealing with the zoning of the use of recreational marijuana. And it, if you read 491.1, it kind of just pretty much details, A, the history, what we're looking to try to accomplish. Primarily, no, solely, it deals with cultivation, sale, distribution, possession, and use of recreational marijuana. It does not deal with... It does not deal with medicinal marijuana. This came about as a result, as you know, from the general election in November of last year. And I think when you look under the purpose, it kind of explains different things. There needs to be what's called a Cannabis Control Commission that needs to issue regulations, and those regulations need to be implemented by September 15th, a few months from now. So what they're looking for regns on as to how are you going to deal with all these use, distribution, sale? That has yet to be promulgated. So if somebody wanted to do it right now, we don't have any rules or regulations as to zone, or to, shall we say, regulate it. And so this moratorium is basically saying, let's put a hold on this until certain requirements, certain regulations from the state are completed. In addition, as you go further through after the first paragraph on A, it says the Cannabis Control Commission is required to issue those regulations regarding implementation, not this year, but by March 15th of next year in 2018, and then to begin accepting applications for licenses if people wanted to do it. So the regulations probably will get them by the middle of next, I say middle of next year, I think it's actually July is when they're probably anticipating it, to get those regulations, and then we'll take it back here with the Planning Board, and the Planning Board will take a look at it and make recommendations. In addition to that, which is kind of interesting, when you read the second or the third paragraph, second paragraph of Subpart A, there are going to have to be two ballot actions. The first ballot action is, are we going to permit the allowed recreational marijuana establishments and retailers? In other words, are we going to want to have people selling marijuana within our town? That's the first question you have to ask. And then the second one, if we pass that at the ballot, then there's going to be a second ballot, and that ballot can't occur until after November 6th of 2018. And then that question that they're asking is, are you going to allow onsite consumption of marijuana products here in the town of Cituate? So there's a lot of work to be done, both at the state level, before it gets down here in our town. So the big question's going to be, do we want it in our town in the first place? And if we do, then are we going to allow consumption? Are we going to have retail use of it? Obviously, given the situation and the, shall we say, the quickness of this has come upon not just the state but also our town, the board of selectmen is of the opinion, we should put a moratorium on it until we get guidance from the state as to what should be regulated, and then we'll have that issue before all of you, do we implement it here in this town? Finally, I think at the very end, this moratorium, you might want, well, how long is this moratorium going to be in effect? It's in effect, if you look on the very last section, I think it's Section C, is until November 30th of 2018. So it's basically about 18 months that we're going to have a moratorium in effect. Board of Selectmen wholeheartedly supported this, and I believe the Planning Board did too, and we'll let you folks make that decision tonight. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Heinemann.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, just a point of clarification, the Advisory Committee, it was presented to us, and it's our understanding that while the article speaks to a temporary moratorium on the cultivation, sale, distribution, possession, and use of recreational marijuana, that the zoning bylaw itself as proposed here only regulates the sale and not the cultivation, excuse me, only regulates the sale and distribution but not the cultivation, possession, and use of recreational marijuana. That was, it's our understanding. It'd be, I think, good to make sure that we're clear on that before we, as the town meeting, vote on exactly what it is we might be having a temporary moratorium on. There's a discussion in, as Selectwoman Danahue had, of the pros of what this would do. There's also discussion of the pros and cons of it in your Advisory Committee booklet. The Advisory Committee voted seven to one in favor of having a temporary moratorium until November 30th of 2018. The, as Selectwoman Danahue mentioned, there, in order to have a permanent moratorium, there would need to be a ballot, and the majority of the Advisory Committee felt that a permanent moratorium was a good idea and was therefore supportive of the temporary moratorium on the way to possibly having a ballot and having a permanent moratorium. Thank you.
To give the required report of the Planning Board, Chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Pritchard. Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, and thanks, everybody, for coming back for a second night for this very important article. It's the penultimate article of the night. We are reporting to the Planning Board in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. Held a public hearing on this article on March 23rd of this year, at which time the public hearing was closed, and the board voted unanimously to support the passage of the article for the April, for this particular town meeting. And I'll just try to summarize here, the passage of question four in November of 2016 allowed for the sale and distribution of marijuana for recreational purpose for the first time in Massachusetts. As a result of that passage, individuals over 21 can now grow up to six plants per person or 12 plants per household. More importantly, the new law allows, with town vote approval, stores to sell marijuana and permits cafes where marijuana can be used in the public. These types of businesses could have broad effects on the character of Cituate, and in the Planning Board's opinion, should be carefully considered. The law as amended also provided that, as Mr. Danahue pointed out, that the Cannabis Control Commission needs to be established and is required to issue regulations, which regulations aren't due to be effective until March 15th of next year, and would thereafter begin accepting applications for licenses. Article 14 will simply establish, this particular article will simply establish a temporary moratorium on the establishment of stores or cafes where marijuana can be publicly sold or consumed. The moratorium will allow Cituate to consider whether to allow or to prohibit these types of businesses, and if they are allowed, to decide where they should be located. We should point out that we did inquire about this moratorium with the Attorney General about the maximum length of this, and that's what really established the moratorium extended through November of 2018. The timeframe was based on laws which require that the prohibitive, prohibition of marijuana cafes must go on biennial election ballot, which would occur next November. The Planning Board considers this issue to be an important issue that could affect the culture and the character of the town, and that the aspects of the law must be decided by town voters, and so should be decided. Therefore, we have recommended passage of this article to allow us time to thoroughly study the issue. We have to await the arrival of the regulations in order to even study them, and to provide time for the voters of Cituate to either allow or prohibit establishments that sell, distribute, or serve marijuana to be used in public spaces. To be clear, this is simply a vote to establish a temporary moratorium on the implementation of the law leading up to the November election. And the Planning Board, as I mentioned before, voted unanimously to support the adoption of this moratorium. And I should also point out that previously for the medical marijuana regulations that came out earlier, we also supported that, and I should note that the town meeting adopted that moratorium to give us time to put together the right plans and regulations in order to implement, and I think that's a prudent thing to do here tonight as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when you can, would you provide Madam Clerk with a copy of the board's report? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Discussion from the floor. Lady to my left.
Yeah, my name is Maat Mulstey, First Parish Road, Cituate. I'm a nurse practitioner, working with the veterans, such as I've had quite a lot of experience with drugs, especially heroin addiction. I'm also a scientific researcher. I have a doctoral degree from Yale University, and I've put quite a bit of time into looking what evidence do we have, you know, for this, for or against this. And lastly, I'm from the Netherlands, so I was born and raised there and very familiar with the legalization of marijuana and all the results of that. So as far as I can see, there are three weak points for going ahead with allowing this. So the first is the quality of the marijuana. You know that tobacco factories get inspected, liquor, but there is no quality inspection on marijuana, and there's been problems in Washington and in Colorado with mold, with butane. So that is a big problem. There's been PCP mixed with the marijuana in the U.S., and there's been very bad side effects from that. So that's why I would advocate for a moratorium, because you have to wait to see that the state would set up some kind of inspection. The second is the driving. So currently, there is no driving, you know, there's no breathalyzer, and this is not a big problem in Holland since we all walk and ride bicycles after we've been smoking marijuana, but it's a bit dangerous here. So I understand that, you know, this is a big problem. We don't have any proper tests yet, and that needs to be developed. And then the third thing is the drug tourism. So if you read about the Netherlands, you will see that we have actually come back quite a lot from the openness that we had about it. Now, the only place that a foreigner can buy marijuana is in Amsterdam and all the other towns, because we've had a lot of problems with drug addicts and dealers coming to our small towns, and there are syringes in the parks, there are junkies sleeping in the driveways, and I've seen this firsthand. These are our nice little towns. Our older people couldn't go out, and we had to tell the children, oh, if you do find a needle, you know, make sure you don't inject yourself, because it could have some kind of disease. So the Netherlands has made new rules now that we don't want any foreigners, like outside of Holland, to buy marijuana, because they are trying to stop the drug tourism, which has really ruined a lot of our towns. So I would urge you to vote in favor of the moratorium.
Gentlemen to my left.
Bernie Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road. I don't have the credentials of my fellow countrywoman on my left-hand side. I came of age in the Netherlands as well. What it has taught me, the recreational use of marijuana creates a very sharp distinguishing between marijuana on one side and the stronger stuff, cocaine, heroin, on the other side. Thanks to that distinguishment, I grew up knowing that hard drugs were bad, soft drugs made you a pothead. As a result, I have never even touched marijuana, even though it was readily available. But reading the wording in Article 15, I am noticing that you mentioned the cultivation and the word use in this article.
One of the questions they had here is, where can I grow my plants? Answer was, plants can only be grown or processed in your primary residence in a locked or secured location, and you cannot grow the plants in a place in your residence where someone can see them from a public space with the use of binoculars, aircraft, or other optical aids. Another question was, can I smoke or consume recreational marijuana products in public? In general, no, you cannot smoke recreational marijuana in a place where you are prohibited from smoking tobacco, and you cannot consume recreational marijuana in a public place. And it cites Chapter 94G. It says, can I drive with my recreational marijuana in my car? Answer is, in general, you cannot have an open container, just like alcohol, of recreational marijuana product in the passenger area of your car while the car is on the road or at a place where the public has access. Also, Chapter 94G does not change the existing penalties for operating a car under the influence if you are impaired by marijuana product and you cannot consume marijuana while operating a car. Then it says, can I smoke or consume recreational marijuana edibles? They use this one at work. And the answer is, in general, your employer still has the authority to limit your consumption of marijuana in the workplace. And then, of course, the next question was, does this impact my medical marijuana registration? And it says, not at this time. So this is not the medical component, it's the recreational. So this is only for the public area, so walking out in the street, walking out in this place, smoking in here, you can't do it. And that's what the moratorium prevents, is saying you cannot do that in public. In the confines of your home, that's your own privacy. I don't know if that answered your question, Bernie, but that's...
Well, to address the motion, Bernie, or pardon me, the previous speaker, let me just make a couple of observations. The first observation is that your motion is within the scope of the article and would be permitted after it was seconded. Before I ask for a second, I'll just ask you to ponder this. The bylaw that is before the meeting right now is in substantially the same form that has been previously approved by the Attorney General now on repeated occasions. And for those of us who are attorneys, guilty, having prior precedents, seeing prior approvals carries a lot of weight. It gives us a sense of comfort that if we come forward with something that's been approved before, we know it's going to be approved again. Your proposed amendment does deviate somewhat from what had been approved before, so that always has an element of risk to it. I think it's within the scope. It would be up to the Attorney General to decide whether it was approvable with your amendment, assuming it all passed. So that's my editorial comment, and now if you wish to make your motion, you may do so.
I would like to make a motion that in Article 14, everywhere where the word cultivation is used, we insert the word "commercial cultivation," and everywhere where the word "use" is used, we insert the word "commercial use" to prevent people from being prosecuted for having a plant or two at home. And two plants in the Netherlands, by the way, is the legal limit.
All right, so the motion, as I understand it, is anywhere where the word "use" appears, you would insert before that word...
Commercial.
Commercial.
And anywhere where the word "cultivation" is used, I'd like to insert the word "commercial cultivation."
All right, do you have that, Kathy? Anywhere where the word "use" is used, it must be preceded by the word "commercial." Anywhere where the word "cultivation" is used, it must be preceded by "commercial." Okay.
So "commercial use" and "commercial..."
That's right, so you're inserting those words in. All right, it's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Look, I'm, Steve, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I wanted to point out, just so I get this...
All right, I'm going to allow the Chairman of the Planning Board to speak before I go to the floor.
I don't. I think we can vote on this amendment, but I would point out that it's not really about commercial use, it's about public use. So it's not, it's not commercial use that we're talking about. I suppose "commercial" would apply to cultivation, but this is really addressing public use.
Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
James Hunt, Manlot Road. I understand from yourself, more learned in these things than I...
Well, let's be real careful on that one.
Yeah.
The legal aspect.
That this may be unnecessary within the intent of the motion, and also that there may be some risk that adding additional verbiage could be denied by the Attorney General. Am I correct?
Well, I'm going to, I think I've said what I've said. I have to go back to trying to play neutral... I have to go back to trying to play neutral player here. I'll ask town council to comment on that. You're having fun, aren't you? Okay, that's all right.
Want me to rephrase?
Yeah, please.
Mr. ... Through you, Mr. Moderator, to town council. Inserting additional verbiage, I understand, is neither necessary nor prudent, because it involves an element of risk that doing so may render the article not approvable by the Attorney General. Is that correct?
Town council.
Brandon Moss, town council. Through you, Mr. Moderator, the answer is yes, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see.
John Swan, 35 Road. We have problems with alcohol. We banned alcohol. The government found out that didn't work, they put it back in. Now, they've come out and made marijuana legal. They're made marijuana legal because they've been unable to control it. But that doesn't mean that we have to have it in our town, and it doesn't mean we have to be dodging people intoxicated with marijuana. We're dodging people intoxicated with liquor now. And I think we should vote on the moratorium.
Any other speakers on the amendment? Gentleman to my left.
Mr. Moderator, John Whitaker, 594 Country Way. The amendment offered by this gentleman simply clarifies the obvious intent of this article. It doesn't conflict with it. It makes it crystal clear that we're talking about a moratorium on the commercial production and sale for profit of marijuana. We obviously don't, as town meeting, have the right to prohibit non-commercial. You all have that right, under this new law, to grow a little bit of marijuana at home and share it with friends. His amendment just clarifies things. And let us not forget, of course, that this, all of this is illegal under federal law. And I also think it's interesting in the write-up that there's been suggested that the town might be wise to delay action on this a bit, and perhaps do it at the fall town meeting, because you can only have a moratorium for a limited time. But anyway, I'm here to say, let's vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Selectmen, Vignati.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a quick comment, and respectfully, this article's been discussed for about three months with the planning board. There's been dozens of meetings about it, and there was many opportunities to change the wording on this. And when we do it on town meeting floor, it's very dangerous, because it could change the content of all the definitions and all of the content that's in there. So I would recommend not doing this, because you just don't know what the ramifications are, and as other people have said, it could just become void at the Attorney General's office later. But I would, again, I don't know that we, in five minutes, can figure out what the change of one or two words is going to have on an impact on a document that's been worked on for months. So I would just be hesitant in accepting this.
Speaker to my left.
Mary Ann Lenschloss, Manlot Road. I think part of the confusion here is that the comments talk about possession and use, and I don't know if there's anything that can be, why that was put in there. It seems very different, you know, from the purpose of the article, and the text of the article really talks about the commercial establishments, but then the comments talks about having a moratorium on the possession and use. So I think that makes me just wonder what was behind that, when the language says one thing and then the comments say something else. You know, reading this somewhat briefly, it looked like most of the text, or almost all of the text, really talks about commercial facilities, except for second paragraph under A, the last sentence, where it talks about whether to allow onsite consumption of marijuana I'm just wondering if that language could be construed to mean in a, at home, as well as at a facility.
It's my understanding that it relates to, for example, setting up, no offense intended to our friends and other ones, an Amsterdam-style marijuana cafe, but if perhaps some of the proponents might like to speak to that.
Is it possible to put some language in the very beginning of the article that doesn't change the text as a whole, just to say something about that this is intended only to address, you know, the use and sale in commercial-type establishments and not in private residences? Perhaps that would be a way to do it, where we don't fool around with the language internally, but just add a statement of clarification in the beginning of the article.
If someone submitted that in writing and we could review it, it's possible. Oh, Madam Planner would like to speak, and this, Laura, this will probably be the last time you address the group.
Thanks. One of the things I just wanted to mention was, I went to the program that FACS put on about marijuana use and kind of the whole commercial establishment of promoting marijuana use. One of the things that they talked about quite a bit was that there's a whole industry to help people in basically producing THC and THC products out of marijuana at home. People are only supposed to have 12 plants, but, you know, who's really going to be going out and checking all of that? You know, it's usually in the basement or in someplace that's hidden away. And just as an example, one of the things that we learned about, and, you know, some of the police officers were there as well, is that in a store like a 7-Eleven, they'll be selling butane in canisters, in large quantities, and, you know, other accessories to help assist people with stripping off the THC from all the leaves in a much more concentrated way than they could otherwise do. So the cultivation, I think, does come into play a little bit, because there's not always a clear line between what's commercial and what's not commercial.
Lady at the center, microphone.
Karen Connolly, 30 Roundtree Lane. My question is, what is the intent of the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board on this article? Is it to put a moratorium on commercial growth, growing, cultivation, et cetera? Because clearly, the state hasn't dealt with that yet in terms of commercial. But are you suggesting, and I just heard the town planner suggest that this actually would prevent people in situ, private citizens, from being able to grow recreational marijuana in their homes, according to the law? So my question is, what is the intent? Is the intent to stop that?
May I answer?
Sure. All right, folks, this is for public use, public sale, commercial sale. We are not regulating your privacy. We cannot do that, because the law, which is Chapter 94G, supersedes any of our zoning regulations. This is for zoning purposes of where we are going to be putting a use, like if we wanted to put a gas station. It's the same concept. It's where you are going to be putting it right now. As far as the state is concerned, and this is the one I forgot to read and I should have, you citizens, if anybody here wants to, you're able to possess up to one ounce of marijuana, of which five grams may be marijuana concentrate, as well as the home growth provisions, which allow possessing up to 10 ounces of marijuana in your primary residence, and six plants per resident, but no more than 12 plants per household. That's under the state law. We are not regulating that. What we're saying is that nobody can open up a shop in Green Bush, Front Street, Homer Rock, or even in your neighborhood. We're saying you can't go outside and walk around the ball fields or smoke in here, just like tobacco, saying we're putting a moratorium on it. If you want to do it inside the confines of your home, on your property, you can do it. But you can't grow more than 12 plants per household, and if you're going to grow plants, you got to keep it hidden. You can't keep it out in the open like you're growing plants, like your vegetables. That's all we're doing here. And we're saying we're just going to put a hold on it for the next 18 months, when the state comes down with regulations. And this lady over here was saying, you know, getting regulations so that when people are going to be producing it, they're not putting up like a distillery, trying to sell hooch, that could be dangerous. They want to make sure that what they're going to be selling to you is actually good stuff for those people who enjoy it. That's all. So changing, in my opinion, the bylaw that has been vetted, not just through the Board of Selectment, but the planning board, who had meetings to go through it, town council, the Attorney General, who's actually the one who's in charge of making sure that your zoning bylaws are accurate, is what's being proposed here, and if you modify it and you're wrong, because we're changing it on town floor, then it voids it, which means none of the stuff that we're trying to prevent is in effect, which means somebody could open up something and put a whole bunch of plants next to your house, or open up a sale and distribute, or maybe, you know, there's been something in the Boston Globe where people are selling it out of the trunk of their car. I mean, that's what we're trying to do here. Put the brakes on, we're not saying no. You can do it in the confines of your house, but we're saying publicly and commercially it cannot happen in situ until we have a ballot question, and that's what we're proposing. Thank you.
May I respond? I'm usually on the other side of this, having to take questions about decisions that we have taken as a CPC. We've held numerous hearings, we invite people to come, they don't come, or they don't pay attention, and then they show up on town floor and ask us questions. And that's the point of this meeting. So I understand the point about if you change wording in an article, that it could create problems, but my concern would be that everyone is clear on the intent of the Board, of the Planning Board, as well as the Board of Selectment. Thank you.
Just, I'm going to recognize Dr. Price in a second, but I'm going to get poor town council back up here. Actually, excellent town council, but the situation is poor. And I just want to put a couple of questions to him, just so that we have a follow-on to Ms. Connolly's question about intent. And as town council, and many of you know, under Chapter 40, Section 32, were this bylaw passed, the Attorney General would have to review it and approve it before it could become effective. So my question for town council, if this bylaw prohibited or sought to prohibit private consumption, would the Attorney General approve it?
Mr. Moderator, the Attorney General would not approve it, and in fact, has not approved it for the town of Westboro this past March.
Thank you. Dr. Price.
Gordon Price, 48 Men...
Pardon me. Gentleman to my right.
Gordon Price, 48 Men, Lord. My questions, concerns are more on the article itself, not on the proposed amendment, so I can hold my comments until later, if you'd like.
Well, let's try to wrap up on the amendment, and then I'll come back.
Okay.
On the amendment, gentleman at the center, Mike.
Road, I'm sorry, Peter Terode, 4 Gannett Road. Mr. Moderator, through you, could we ask the town council whether he considers this amendment to the article to be redundant, and also whether he considers the unrevealed language of the amendment to be a possible failure with the Attorney General?
Well, sure. Town council, I know you haven't had a lot of time to review this, but based on what you've been able to look at, could you answer the gentleman's question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, in my opinion, it would be redundant to add the language. In terms of the Attorney General's approval, I indicated previously, the Attorney General's approved language without the amended text. It opens it up to question if the Attorney General would approve the addition of the text of the amendment.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. I'm getting a little old and not as nimble to get up to the microphone as quickly as I used to be, so I appreciate the opportunity. Just one comment. I think what is confusing town meeting, in my opinion, is not the proposed change to the bylaw. What is confusing town meeting is the way that this booklet was written. The heading of the, and the description of the proposed zoning amendment is confusing it, the town meeting, because it talks about zoning bylaw amendment, temporary moratorium on cultivation, sale, distribution, possession, and use of recreational marijuana, when the actual bylaw that is proposed does not do that. And, you know, as far as the amendment, I think it's fine, I think it's fine without it, but the problem is not the issue, the problem is the way this booklet was written. Thank you.
Gentleman at the center, Mike, on the amendment.
Ed Mosher, 307 Tilden Road. As he said, I think there's a lot here that may be confusing, but I find that the operative part of this whole thing is that sentence, Section C, which says, "A moratorium on the use of land or structures for recreational marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers," which is, I think, is commercial use. If you go back in the definitions and peel it back for establishments and retailers, for example, in a marijuana cultivator, it says da-da-da-da-da, but not to consumers. I think it's clear the way it's written. I don't think we need to add any clarifying language that may unclarify.
All right. I think we're ready for a vote on the amendment. The amendment was, and if I can... Everywhere where the word, no, let me see if I can read this, sorry. Insert the word "commercial" in front of the word "use." Everywhere the word "use" appears, insert the word "commercial" in front of the word "cultivation," wherever the word "cultivation" occurs. Moved, seconded, discussed. Approval of an amendment requires only a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Amendment fails. We return now to the main motion. Dr., gentleman to my right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't want anyone in the audience to assume my comments...
Could you identify yourself, mystery guest?
Gordon Price, 48 Menlot Road. My comments are not to make anyone understand that I endorse the use of marijuana, because I think passage of the bill was a huge mistake. I'm confused, I don't know whether any other people in the audience are confused, but if we're looking to put a moratorium on the cultivation, sale, I'm concerned that we also have the words in there, possession and use. My concerns are that if someone of the legal age, which I guess is 21, that can possess marijuana, is stopped by one of the policemen, one of our fine policemen in town, and there's a joint on his passenger seat, and we have a moratorium that talks about possession and use, what position are we going to be putting our police force? You know, what kind of situation are they going to be in when they encounter such an It seems like the article is reaching out into a lot of areas that I think are fraught with a problem. I'm not sure it's well-written. Maybe we need to think about this a little bit longer, but I'd like to hear from chief or end or our legal counsel about what situation they're going to be in if someone is stopped and we have a moratorium.
Coin to us, gentleman. Town council.
This is a zoning bylaw, so it would be enforceable in the same way as any other zoning bylaw, in terms of the moratorium.
But it addresses possession and use. That's my concern. Does that put Chief Stewart in an awkward position when one of his men stops somebody on 3A for a traffic violation?
I understand the question. So the question is, are there any criminal implications if this bylaw is adopted?
Yes.
Chief.
No. This moratorium is just to prohibit, just to give us more time to see what the state legislature comes up with and the CCC, as far as the regulations that we have to abide by. This doesn't affect the possession and use in private property, or, you know, in your own home or anything like that. And the officers are well-versed on how to manage...
And, uh, the officers are well-versed on how to, how to manage us at this point. You know, we, we could see this coming. The decriminalization and then the legalization of medical marijuana and, and this coming, but, uh, there's, there's a lot more work that has to be done, uh, as far as guidance, for law enforcement. This, this is just, it's the same as what we did with the, uh, with the medical marijuana. And, uh, I believe we had a moratorium on that, and then it gave us time to figure out zoning issues, and then we came back and we had, uh, you know, with, with the Planning Board, we ended up creating a zoning, if, if there was going to be medical marijuana distribution in Situate, where it was going to be. And that's all that says. This, the only use that this prohibits is, would be in a situation where a bar wanted to turn around and, and allow people to smoke marijuana in that bar. That's what it is, like a café style. And that's, and again, it may not be perfect wording, but, you know, make no mistake about it, the Police Department knows what we're doing with this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Gentleman to my left. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, Tom Robotham, 50 Menlot. Uh, it seems like all of the language that's very confusing is in the paragraph above 491 and in the comment section. When we vote, are we voting on the language in the paragraph above 491 or in the comment section? Or are we only voting on 491, 491.1, A through D? Are the comments just extra? Are we voting on those?
Let me, I'll try to address that. The preface language is just a vehicle to get it before the floor. The comments are the sales pitch. Neither of them become part of the bylaw. The only part of the bylaw, the only thing that would become effective is everything that begins with the heading, 491 Temporary Moratoria, and then running through, uh, the last words in Section D, which end at, not affect the other provisions or application of this bylaw. The rest of it is just sales language.
I think with that clarified, that gets rid of all of the debate that we've had about the language, because the language is very confusing in the comments and in the preface, and that's all of our problem, I think.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Hi, Amelia Hunt, Manlot Road. I think that it's just confusing because people are thinking that they're not going to be allowed to have it at their home, but this is really just about zoning, and that's it. So, that's it. And I'd like to move the question.
All right. I think we're ready for a vote. As a zoning bylaw, approval requires a two-thirds majority for it to pass. I'll try it on a voice vote. If that fails, I will ask the tellers to take account. All those in favor of the proposed moratorium as moved before the body signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Whoa. And I know who said no. I declare that the bylaw passes by a two-thirds vote. I think we even got it on camera, too, so. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. Bad joke. Okay, last one. Please just hang on, hopefully for another minute or two. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the general bylaws of the town by adding the following new bylaw, Section 10260- Revolving Funds, and set fiscal year 18 limits as fully set out and printed in the Advisory Committee booklet provided to all voters at this meeting, and further add to wind turbine revenues and solar array revenues under purposes and expenditures the words, quote, "and any other municipal or school needs as the Board of Selectmen may so determine," end quote.
It's been moved, seconded by Selectman Harris. Discussion, Selectman Danny.
Folks, this is, um, it's, it's fully explained in the advisory book, but last fall, Governor Baker passed the Municipal Modernization Act, um, and as a part of that, this section, um, relates to our revolving funds. And, um, as the comment said in the revolving funds, it says, "The new general bylaws recommended to create, uh, to be created and reflecting all the town's current revolving funds that we have." This is simply a legal requirement, giving, uh, the new change and how revolving funds are handled. What it does is it gets, you know, makes things more, um, locally, increases your local independence, and it provides more local flexibility. Thank you.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not going to repeat everything John had said, but yes, it's in the comments. Uh, as a result of the Municipal Modernization Act, uh, last year, uh, we're going to be putting, uh, these into the general bylaws. The Advisory Committee recommended eight to zero unanimously in support of the motion. Thank you.
From the floor, gentleman to my right.
Uh, point of order, Mr. Moderator. Do we have to vote each of these separately, or can we combine them in one vote?
I believe the motion was, uh, what was it? As print? It's a, it's an interesting question. The law changed with the Municipal Modernization Act. You're now required to adopt a bylaw for revolving funds. So in past years, you had it all set out individually. Uh, the motion was to adopt as printed, uh, in, I believe it was the Advisory Committee booklet, and by referencing that printing, uh, that's where you find all the individual breakout, and so that's legally sufficient.
So because it's broken out in the book, we have to vote eight times?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So we have to take a separate vote for each one?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, lady to my right.
Jennifer Kuhn, 20, Cary Litchfield Lane. Um, I was wondering if I could change, um, some of the wording? And, um, one of the...
Well, tell us what you've got.
Okay. So under the war, the wind turbine revenues, under the fund name, where there shall be a separate fund called the Wind Turbine Revenues Revolving Fund Authorized for Use of the Town Administrator, I would like to change that for the use of the Beautification Committee. And also under the solar array revenues, um, there should be a separate fund called Solar Array Revenues Revolving Fund Authorized for the use of the Board of Selectmen. I would like to change that to the Recreation Department.
I'm sorry, that would be beyond the scope of the article. The way the bylaw is structured, the spending authorities are clearly set out. It would be one thing to change the amounts, but to actually change the party authorized to spend the money would be beyond the scope of the article.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman at the center, Mike.
Peter Carusa, Oceanside Drive. So just so I'm clear on this, we have revol, we have existing revolving funds that effectively do this. We're just memorializing this in the bylaws. We're not changing the way we currently authorize the expenditures. These aren't expenditures that are otherwise appropriated, is that correct, by?
Yes.
Town Meeting?
Well, Selectman Danny.
You got it. Yes.
Thank you.
Lady at the center, Mike.
Janice Limble, James Way. I have a question about, um, the back page on 40. It says the annual limit for each account.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
There's an annual limit for each account. Has the fund name and the annual limit, does that mean, what, what happens to any monies that are over these limits?
Go into the general fund, wouldn't it? The Finance Director.
Good evening, Nancy Hill, Finance Director. Almost made it through the night. Under the statute, which is Chapter 44, 53 E and a half, because they ran out of letters and numbers, um, if any time during the year, the, we're going to go over that limit, the person in my position needs to go before the Board of Selectmen and ask them to raise the limit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, so voted and declared, passed unanimously. Thank you all very much for persevering. Motion to adjourn? Moved, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, so voted, declared unanimously. Thank you. Good night.